Roll call.
Counselor Holbrook?
Here.
Counselor Donovan?
Here.
Counselor Katerina?
Here.
Counselor St. Clair?
Here.
Counselor Blais?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here. Next on the agenda would be general public comments, three minutes, name and address. Anyone?
Michael Turek, 11 Bayberry Lane. I must speak early this evening because I've got to return to some caretaker duties. Chairman Sullivan has assured me that the council not only listens but does heed the public comments, so here are mine. Tonight, the council will take up order fourteen dash eighty, request to replace, to place the referendum question to purchase a new fire truck on the local ballot for the November fourth municipal elections. I'm urging you to reject this request. My reasoning follows. My understanding is that the present fire truck is going to be twenty-five years old and the replacement schedule calls for a new one. Replacement schedules are designed by people and can be misleading to the actual life of a product. My background is aircraft maintenance, aircraft logistics, and I understand that speaking to your audience is how you're supposed to speak, and you may not know a lot about airplanes, but please listen to this. When Lockheed Corporation built the U-2 aircraft in nineteen fifty-five, the replacement schedule called for a five-year lifespan because of the flimsy fuselage and wings. The replacements were introduced in nineteen sixty-eight, thirteen years later. The original aircraft flew for thirty years until nineteen eighty-five, even though the replacements were still flying, or also flying. The nineteen sixty-eight aircraft had a twenty-five-year lifespan and a replacement schedule to prove it. Engineers said that it could not fly more than twenty-five years. Those airplanes are flying today in critical areas, supporting the war effort, and they are forty-six years old. When Boeing introduced the seven oh seven in nineteen fifty-nine, a similar story happened. The seven oh seven is still flying today in different parts of the world. We in the United States have moved on to other aircraft, but I question whether we needed them, or are we a throwaway society? When the United States embargoed Cuba, the flow of American autos into Cuba stopped. Cubans are still driving their nineteen fifty-five Chevys. The town is now over ninety million dollars in debt. I urge you don't add to this burden. I think we all know that the voters will approve a new fire truck because they're afraid that if they don't have one, their safety will be in jeopardy. I think we should maintain the present fire truck and reduce our staggering debt. I know very little about fire trucks, but I do know a lot about logistics and a lot about replacement schedules. Please reject this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any subject?
Hi, Gina Christie, One Meadow Wood Drive in Scarborough. First of all, I want to thank Ms. St. Clair for her support and concern for the residents of this town. I do agree that there are valid concerns that were raised regarding having adequate coverage in the event of an emergency. I do agree that that's critical. And I would also like to see much more information regarding other technologies that may be available to ensure the results that we're looking for. And I also do appreciate Mr. Bacon's planning efforts and working with us, working with you. But last of all, I do want to make it very clear that regarding any kind of compromises about putting cellphone towers on top of utility pools, putting them in larger parcels of land, you know, putting them in less populated residential areas, I want to make it very clear, in case we haven't already, we do not want to see cellphone towers in residential areas, whether they're densely populated or sparsely populated, or in RF zones. They belong in industrial zones. You know, I think Mr. Bacon may be missing that point, you know, just in case anybody's not clear on this. I think we've spoken, you know, what part of no don't you understand? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Suzanne Foley Ferguson, three thirty-one Blackpoint Road. So, first I want to say that I really appreciate the direction that the council is moving in terms of the cellphone tower ordinance. I heard two of the councils talk about how there's still a lot of work to do and then say that, you know, we have to work in the ordinance committee to do that. But then I heard the town manager say it's tabled and so action has to be taken at the next meeting. And so then, and while that's accurate, one action that can be taken at that meeting is called tabling again. So I would encourage the council, when they go to ordinance committee meeting, to take as much time as you need in ordinance committee meeting and not take action per se, like real action, at the council meeting until you really feel comfortable about it. There's a lot of good ordinances out there for samples, and I can get some samples to you as well. One thing I want to point out about the twenty-five acres in a residential area, it comes out to about a radius of five hundred and sixty-four feet. So that means a tower could be put in a rural area, five hundred and sixty-five feet from someone's house. You have to think of it in terms of the radius of the whole thing. When you think of it in terms of that, you may even reconsider twenty-five acres. You might want to think fifty acres. But that brings me to really what the last speaker spoke to, and that is, the community has said they don't want them in residential zones. And I think one counselor said the most promising thing, and that was that if we put two hundred or three hundred foot towers in our industrial zones, we'll cover the whole town. That was really promising, and I think that's what the community wants. There's also other types of ideas, such as putting an overlay zone in northwest Scarborough, an overlay zone for a cell tower there if need be. But raising the heights in our current zones is really important. The community does not want them in residential zones. Thank you.
Hi, Elisa Boxer, sixteen Minute Man Drive. And thank you so much. One of the most promising things I heard tonight was that you are not going to go by the shot clock, which is basically the cell companies saying, "You have ninety days once we file an application, and if you don't do it, we'll sue you." So thank you. They go around the country trying to do this, and some communities get scared, some don't, so hopefully we won't. Really, really appreciate that. And Counselor St. Clair, thank you for representing us rather than representing the interests of industry. Yeah, I would absolutely encourage you to begin with increasing the height to two hundred feet, starting with industrial zones. We see in many, many communities, towers packed, co-located to the hilt, and so if it's a spacing issue, increasing the height to two hundred feet would definitely solve any interference problems. Again, we've seen it in other communities, and there are ordinances, and there are specifications to make that work. So I would encourage you to begin there. Yeah, I also really appreciate Counselor Holbrook. There's a difference between data, someone's teenage son, being able to play videos in a brick house basement, as opposed to being able to call nine-one-one on your cell if you're on the road. So I believe it was Dan Bacon who said the IDK consultant's map was for A-plus coverage. I'd be very curious, especially in the RF district, who wants A-plus coverage as opposed to just being able to call nine-one-one from the road and not having the call be dropped? So, yeah, I guess the last thing is the expectation, and I know you've heard a lot about this, but I will echo it, that when we buy our homes in an RF zone, not necessarily in a dense residential neighborhood, because I don't think any of us expect a tower to be plunked in the middle of a neighborhood, but if we're buying our homes in an RF zone, the expectation is that it's not going to become the site for an industrial commercial facility like a cell tower. And honestly, the same concerns do apply to the mini towers on telephone poles, and actually those can be more dangerous because they end up closer to homes. So I would encourage you to not go that route. Yeah, thank you.
If you'd like to speak, please line up so we can, don't take the time in between of...
Hi, good evening. I'd also like to thank all of you for your hard work on this. I'm Laura Hannan from seventeen Powderhorn Drive, and I'd like to just reiterate my, I would not like these towers to be in residential areas or on utility pools in residential areas. And I'd also like to just say about RF areas, I'd encourage you to look ahead at the land use. I mean, maybe twenty or thirty years from now, these areas might be neighborhoods. You know, we think of all the new neighborhoods that have sprung up in the last twenty, thirty years. I mean, you might have a big parcel and you put a tower there, and, you know, a developer might come along and want to build a neighborhood there sometime, and there's a huge tower in the middle, and really not suitable families are not going to want to move there, and you've lost the whole neighborhood of thirty or forty homes, which would be bringing revenue in to Scarborough. So, just because now, you know, you've got a big area doesn't mean that down the road, that land is not going to be, you know, wanted for neighborhood. Although, I'd like to say that maybe there are alternatives, like boosters, that someone could get for their home to boost their cell signal. And also, you know, maybe, I do support putting them in industrial areas and raising the height. Maybe you could find an industrial area by the water, put in a huge tower, make it look like a lighthouse, sell it as a, you know, a tourist thing. Anyway, but I definitely do not want them in RF areas or residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Julie Tupper, one sixty-five Spurwink Road. I'm going to echo what you've already heard many people talk about. I moved to Scarborough about three and a half years ago from South Portland, and the reason was I wanted to move out of a cluster neighborhood and get into more of a rural setting. So I bought my home on good faith that it was going to be a safe zone, and, you know, I've been hearing a little bit of conversation around this twenty-five acre scenario or more. And my concern is, there's a farmer across the street from me, he owns about forty acres. So if all of a sudden, he's allowed to have a cell tower on his land, the purchase of my house, which I did in good faith, is all of a sudden, I got to move again. Because I happen to be one that's very, very sensitive to wireless. I don't have it in my house, I don't have a smart meter. I occasionally put on my cellphone to just check messages, but it's a choice. I don't use wireless, cordless phones because of the effects. I'm having effects in here because of the wireless. But I can control that. I can say no in my house. But if there's a tower across the street from me or within a mile, I can't control that, and it's going to affect me. I think you all remember S.T. Warren's paper mill smell that would permeate towns and homes, and we couldn't control it, and we hated it. For those of you who cannot feel the effects of wireless, don't know what it's like, but I urge you to consider, there are a lot of people who do have sensitivities, mostly children, and small pets, and small framed people. I have a nephew, ten years old, he lives between two cell towers here in Scarborough. He's now a statistic with leukemia. Did the cell towers cause it? I don't know, but it falls in the pattern. So I'm really concerned, you know, that it's more than just the views, it's more than even property values. There's a lot of health concerns, and I for one can feel the effects of it. So thank you very much for the work that you're doing, and I appreciate the dialogue that's gone on tonight. I think it's encouraging, and I hope it continues down that road. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Public comments, and move on to minutes of last meeting.
Take care.
Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Post?
Abstain. Abstain.
Okay. Thank you. One abstain. Adjustments to the agenda?
No.
No. Okay. Items be designed, treasure warrants, I've already done that, non-action items, we have one.
It's a report from the Canine Education and Enforcement ad hoc committee.
And we have Ms. Foley here tonight?
I believe so.
For the presentation?
Counselors, thank you. It's been a while since we've seen each other. Holbrook's got a new haircut, everyone else's got a little color from the sun from the summer, so everyone's looking healthy. I'm going to present to you the findings of the Canine Education and Enforcement Committee. We are sunsetting, and this is our final recommendation to the council. I believe the council's received this packet already for review, so this will be assumation. Should you have questions more in depth on any of these, by all means, let me know, and I'd be happy to discuss it. Ms. Foley put together a lovely PowerPoint here to help guide us through, so I'll go through this. Our charge was to work with the community services to enhance the educational programs and materials available, work with Public Works on the signage that's currently on the beaches, support the pullover coordinator with beach monitoring programs, and I would like to say that we had a very nice working relationship with Ryan and Bill. Ryan putting a brand-new program together and running that, I think he did an exemplary job for year one, and I look forward to advancements in that program for year two and beyond. Evaluate the needs for dog parks and the potential of a tag program, and then work with the pullover coordinator on designation of essential habitat areas. The educational program and materials and signage was one where we spent a considerable amount of time focusing on, in that it really has the crux of the success of the program in its hands. Adding codes of conduct and training scenarios for the monitors was a big step, I think, that needs to be taken for year two, to provide adequate training for the monitors on the beach, who are disseminating the codes and information to beachgoers. We also felt the quantity and placement of signs were adequate, if not overly abundant. Messaging on future signs, however, we thought could be more welcoming. We did find that the messaging on the beaches through the signage presented kind of a very challenging atmosphere for folks who were just coming to the beaches for the first time, and it wasn't a very welcoming environment overall. So we'd like to see those messages recrafted to bring a little more of a welcoming environment. Additionally, the messaging on off-season hours was confusing to several people. They didn't understand the terminology and the wording of the one to three hours that were allowed for folks to be on the beach without dogs. They thought that was the only time they could be on the beach with dogs. So there's a little confusion there, and I can see how that could happen. So we were recommending that we put up some sticker covers with some clarification, as opposed to recreating all the signs, much like they did on the turnpike when they switched to sixty-five to seventy, they just put a sticker over the sixty-five, and that could be adequately done with a vinyl covering on the signage that exists currently. And then lastly, on signage, the committee felt that the elimination of those removable real estate-style signs that propagated Higgins Beach from the top of the shore down to the waterline should be removed, as they presented an environment that was more reminiscent of the Jersey Shore than of a beach in Scarborough. The dog parks and tag programs additionally, we spent a considerable amount of time reviewing. On the dog parks, it was the committee's feeling that there's still no appetite for dog parks to be created, and it would face stern opposition from the public in terms of spending any tax dollars to create a dog park or several dog parks that would be needed in Scarborough. We did look at the options of privately funded dog parks, and in the study of those, we found that those were the most effective in terms of success rate communities could have when they were privately funded. But still, there would be significant opposition for doing so, and it would be a very costly experience nonetheless. Dog parks, a single dog park will run somewhere between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars per year to generate and maintain. The tag program, we looked far and wide for the tag program examples that we could build a recommendation around. The only one we were able to identify with any sort of long-term use was a tag program in Boulder, Colorado, and they instituted it in two thousand and six. At great expense, and they tried very desperately to get that off the ground and running, they ran it for four years, and what they found was, while initially they had some success with it, and Boulder is a much smaller community where that would be a little bit more successful than Scarborough, where it's more spread out and you have a lot of different areas to cover. Even that, they found that after the fourth year, there was no reduction in the incidents with dogs that the tag program was curtailing. And so they found it to be a wholly ineffective program, and they spent a considerable amount of money to generate that program. Consequently, though, the council was charging us to come up with some kind of a program that would emulate that, we would recommend instead that no tag program be instituted. It's the belief of the council and the committee, rather, that the resources to generate a tag program and maintain and create a tag program could be better used on educational materials, and that Scarborough would see no appreciable gain from instituting a tag program, and that the cons of doing so would far outweigh the pros. There would be considerable reluctance, again, from the community to have such a thing. And it also, you know, the target being visitors to our town, it's a very difficult program to disseminate to folks coming into the town to have any form of efficacy that would be measurable. And so the recommendation of the committee is that we don't go down the same path that another community spent great time, money, and effort to try to institute with no success. And instead, we learn from that experience, and we go in a different direction and apply our resources in a more effective manner. Essential habitat areas, you know, obviously, this season for pullovers was arguably the most successful we've had in a decade. It was a wonderfully successful season. I await the Audubon report to review those results, but overall, there are, the town, we believe now, the town may apply to the state for the delisting of Ferry Beach as an essential habitat. No nesting birds have been seen there, and this would allow the state to not have any further impediments on things like dredging. And so that, we would request that the town manager take out the necessary paperwork to begin that process for the delisting of that as essential habitat. However, what we also found and discussed as a committee was that the areas to the north and south of Scarborough Beach should be added to essential habitat, because there were pullovers that nested there. And so what we really spent a lot of time looking at was, where were the pullovers? Where was the successful breeding grounds for the pullovers? And were our designated areas in the same place? And so, as you see in the report, we were off by a little bit on essential habitats and where we assumed they would be versus where they showed up and thrived. In fact, many of the pullovers that thrived were well outside of the protected areas and into the general population areas, and they did just fine. And the protected areas that were cordoned off saw no activity at all, and so we were protecting the sand dunes essentially. The pullovers had found other ways and means to propagate. So, other recommendations? Continue the monitor program. It was a great program. Again, I commend Ryan and Bill for running a very difficult and challenging year one with all the obstacles in their way. I thought they did an exemplary job. Start getting those commitments and conducting those trainings much earlier, however. We want to, we would love to see a full slate of monitors who are educated and ready to go when that season starts. Obviously, it was a late start this year for many reasons, but we have the opportunity now to start much earlier. So by the end of March, we would love to see all of those monitors in place, trained, and ready to hit the beaches. Additionally, we'd recommend eliminating the restricted areas for year two. State land restrictions are more than adequate at Higgins Beach and Ferry Beach, and they're by and large irrelevant as per the pullover's success at Pine Point Beach this year. Again, the pullovers that were very successful at Pine Point were well outside of the protected areas, and so their success rate wasn't due to their protected area, but more, that's where they chose to nest, and they did just fine. We also found that the different regulations from beach to beach were very confusing for people. And so Higgins Beach having a different regulation on what could occur in the restricted area versus Pine Point Beach, which has a slightly different twist on that, should consolidate that, remove the additional restrictions as they're not necessary. And that is the conclusion of our report in summary, and you have the full report in detail at your disposal. We request that you act on that. Any questions?
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
Want to go now?
Did you want to ask a question?
No, I wanted to say something.
Okay, seeing that, I'd like to thank you and thank everyone on the committee for serving and going through all those nights of meetings on the issues that were given to you and the resolution by the council. So, thank you very much. There's no questions, so with that, Counselor St. Clair.
Thanks. Just, I was the council liaison to this committee, so that's why I just wanted to say something briefly. I was very impressed with this group of people that, again, I mean, it's always, it's always a task, they were given a big task, they handled it well. When you volunteer your services, I mean, I'm on the appointments committee, so we know how challenging it can be to get people to volunteer their services, and these guys came in week after week after week, ready to go, on task. Because I was a council member and they were on the committee and the back history, we didn't always necessarily see eye to eye on everything, but we were able to get through that, and that was what made the process, to me and my, in my world, such an amazing thing. It was handled on a communication level where we could talk through it, and I loved that about it. I learned a lot. I know a lot about birds, way more than I ever thought possible. And I think it gave me goosebumps, and I'm sure that's probably, some people are probably rolling their eyes, but when I saw that this was the most, this was the best year yet, and I thought that was a great thing, and, you know, we all have been through a lot with this, staff, council, townspeople, and this was our best year, and that, to me, is, I don't know, that... and this was our best year, and that to me is, I don't know, that's something we should be proud of. And, okay, so some people look at it like, yep, it's a couple of birds, but, yep, it's a couple of people that didn't get to walk their dog, but it's not, it's bigger than that. And there was a lot of things that got accomplished during these meetings, and I'm proud of that, and I'm proud of you as a group, and I'm proud of this council for supporting this going forward. And so, I wanted to thank the council also and Chairman Sullivan for helping us be able to put together this packet and have the time to present it. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Sinclair. The, as far as the recommendations and implementation of those, they'll probably take place sometime this winter under a new council. So, with that being said, we'll move on to...
Order number fourteen dash seventy-two is a seven P M. public hearing and second reading on the proposed designation of Griffin Road Affordable Housing Development District and adopting the development program for such district and authoring a credit enhancement agreement for such district pursuant to the attached order fourteen dash seventy-two and the provisions of chapter two oh seven of title thirty-eight of the main revised statutes as amended and authorize the town manager to sign any and all documents pursuant to said district.
Okay. With that, I open the public hearing for the Griffin Road Affordable Housing Development District. Would anyone like to speak to that?
Not everybody at the same time.
Well, seeing none, I close the public hearing. Um, motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Yay. Can I say that?
Do you want, I mean, we've been over and over this...
Attorney is asking for...
Sure, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interject, that went so fast. Again, my name's Shawna Mueller, for the record. I'm an attorney at Bernstein Sure, representing the town on TIF matters. I just wanted to let the council know, we have negotiated a credit enhancement agreement that goes along with this TIF. That's the agreement between the town and the developer here that dictates the way in which property taxes on the increased assessed value resulting from the project will be divided. And so, I just wanted to describe that, and that in the order, the long version of the order that's in your packet, it provides delegated authority to the town manager to not only execute that credit enhancement agreement which follows the application document that's in your materials, but it also provides the town manager the authority to make some changes that are non-substantive to that document as the town, if it's approved tonight, will send it on to Main Housing for final approval. So, I just wanted to say, we know we're going to make a couple of different changes in there that are very minor, but one of them I thought was worth noting, this agreement between the town and the developer is an agreement whereby the developer will have the right to receive fifty percent reimbursement on its future property taxes paid for a term of fifteen years total. The TIF district term is seventeen years, but we have drafted the language in such a way that that fifteen-year term will not begin until the project receives its certificate of occupancy. From that point forward, it will be fifteen years. That's the threshold that the developer is interested in getting because it provides them additional points towards the federal tax credits that Main Housing issues. So, I just wanted to lay that out. That will be clarified somewhat from the document you've received in a couple of places, and I'm happy to tell you exactly where, but I just wanted to describe those are the types of changes that we will make in tweaks before it goes to Main Housing if you approve this today. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I apologize, I didn't realize that you wanted to speak. With that, is there any questions or comments? Council Blais.
I've got one question. What is the difference of income to the town if we go ahead with this or if we disapprove it?
That's a good question. It's a little bit like reading a crystal ball, but the projection if this project goes forward is that it will produce roughly, I think it's, depending on what mill rate escalator you use, roughly twenty-five thousand dollars in property taxes per year. The proposal here is to divide that fifty-fifty between the housing initiative fund, the affordable housing initiative fund of the town, and the developer reimbursement. You asked if you don't approve it, what would happen? I think the developer is likely to say, and I can, they can certainly speak for themselves, that this project isn't likely to move forward without this approval. So, in that sense, it's unclear what will happen to the property and whether or not there will be increased tax revenue. But there's certainly the possibility something else may get developed there. So, that's sort of the crystal ball aspect of your question.
Wasn't this property originally moved from a residential zone to a T V C or whatever you call that zone about eighteen months ago?
That, I suspect we should have the developer get up and speak to those specifics about the project itself. Would you like to come on up?
Just while Kevin takes the stage, the zone was changed in advance of any proposal from this developer. It was done as part of the planning process through the Long Run Planning Committee and one of the many cleanup improvements for the comp plan. So, it was done in advance, not in response to this particular request.
I realize that, but when it came forward to us originally, it was for apartments.
Right, yeah.
Right, correct. It's changed over time. This is Kevin Blais. Did he have something to say? Well, I think he's going to try to respond to that question.
Okay.
So, a couple of things about the, maybe a little bit about the timeline and how it's changed over time, and then the specifics of the dollars. The first iteration that came before you, which I believe you referred to, was had three buildings, maybe three or four buildings, more units, it was family housing, or a couple of affordable units to get a little additional density, but it wasn't an affordable housing project. Then, I wasn't involved in that, I subsequently bought into the partnership with the Rusperas Rockies here tonight, can talk about the early history. The idea that the Rusperas and I had jointly was that we would create a senior affordable housing project, which is something that I specialize in, Kevin Bunker, Developers Collaborative. And we turned into one building, reduced the parking, reduced the unit count, and tucked the building back against the site. So, there was a lot of butter issues that went away just by virtue of those changes. The remaining butter issues that we had, we worked out on a one-on-one basis, and I think I can confidently say that we changed the situation that had a fair bit of controversy when we started to one that really people were quite comfortable with. Then, moving on to the actual dollars, the taxes right now are about three thousand dollars. So, the TIF is really only about the increment, so the total taxes would be about twenty-eight upon completion, three plus twenty-five. So, we would be proposing that twelve-five of that increment be returned to the project, and twelve-five go to the town, so the town would actually be getting about fifteen-five, twelve-five of which the town has elected to put in that affordable housing fund. And I am here to tell you, I've explained a few times before, I can go through the scoring, but without these three points, this project isn't going to score high enough, not this year. There's a proposal to do a big bond issue for senior housing, might be a couple of years down the road. That might change things and really allow some development, allow them to get down the line. But the scoring's pretty competitive, I've seen the list of pre-applications for this year, and there's two, there's two that I think have a real good shot, and there's five or six that are kind of, I think, on the cut line, they might do one or two of those, and ours is one of those. So, even, and that's with this TIF. So, we built in seventeen years, because we need fifteen years to get those points, and we asked for seventeen years so we have an opportunity to try yet again next year if we're not successful. We need to do every single thing we can to score high enough to do it, and I'm very comfortable saying that we don't have enough points without this TIF. The TIF doesn't increase our cash flow one bit, it allows Main Housing to give us less of their scarce resource and load us up with more debt, so there, helps their money go farther, helps their mission, helps them do more housing. And for that, they give us points because it shows that the town is willing to partner with us on the development, and they want to incentivize those kinds of projects.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Council Holbrook, I think you were in that for you.
Oh, sure. So, I guess I just want to say, you know, I wholeheartedly support this project, I think, and I think he's said it best, is, you know, it meets so many needs on so many levels. Senior housing, affordable senior housing is a scarce resource, not even for Scarborough, but really just, you know, southern Maine in general. So, the one bedroom living that you can afford on a, maybe a social security income is very much needed in the community. Also, as we spoke to a little bit, the concerns from the neighborhood, you know, the potential of what can be built in this location. Certainly, yes, there's maybe more tax dollars that could come into the town's pocket by building it at its full potential. However, there's that little, you know, hidden cost of things. I think our per pupil cost is somewhere in the vicinity of ten grand a pop, so if you build at full potential and maybe squeak out another ten grand in tax revenue to spend it in your schools teaching kids, it washes. So, there is a cost benefit there. So, it meets a very much high need, there's probably a cost savings to the town, and it helps us possibly move some other affordable initiatives further in the future. So, I do wish you great luck in scoring high on your, high on your points.
Council Katerina.
Yeah, just by chance, today, and I was reading in National Association Realtors Demographics Study that just came out, that said probably one of the least served populations in the next ten to thirty years is going to be elderly, and particularly those on fixed incomes. So, this is going to be ahead of the curve. Again, I support it wholeheartedly. There are a number of people in my demographic who are going to need places to move to, and they can't afford their single-family homes anymore, and I think this type of a project is necessary, and I'm very happy to support it myself, so.
Council Donovan.
This is the kind of project that towns can really step up and make a contribution to the community, because we're talking about people who are really unable to find good housing in this community at this price. This is totally unique, and given the difficulty that we've seen with tax rates and tax increases, this is a perfect example of allowing some senior citizens with low incomes to land on their feet, and I totally support it.
Okay. All right, now, I'll say my two cents. The, you know, since this conversation has started, I've actually ran into three senior couples that have been waiting for something like this. They don't want to leave Scarborough, they want to stay here in Scarborough, they love it, they've been here all their lives, and they've just been holding on for that reason. And I think, you know, like I said, once we started this conversation, they approached me and said that was a wonderful idea, and that it's a, you know, good use of the property from what I'm hearing from the neighbors that had a huge issue with it before. They seem to be settled down a little bit with the project that's at hand now, so I think it's a win-win for the community in the whole. So, with that, I don't have anything else. All those in favor? Opposed? None? Thank you.
Order number fourteen seventy-eight is a seven P M. public hearing and action on the new request for a food handler's license from Exeter Forty-two Donuts LLC. Doing business Dunkin' Donuts located at two eighty-four Payne Road.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to the license issues? Anyone? Seeing none? Close the public hearing? Do you have a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? Council Benedict.
It seems to me, uh, that this Dunkin' Donuts is already open.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
It is. They provided a, it was, as long as they have it on file with us and they have their occupancy permit, they know they still have to go through this process, so they have a conditional license.
What was the last thing you said?
A conditional license.
Conditional, excuse me. Conditional license. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed?
Order number fourteen seventy-nine is a seven P M. public hearing and action on the new request for a combined massage establishment and massage therapist license from Leslie Gresham. Doing business is Leslie Gresham Massage Therapy located eleven Farmhouse Road.
Okay, would anybody from the public like to speak to this order? Seeing none, and close the public hearing? Motion?
Move approval?
opposed.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, discussion? Saying no one wants to discuss it?
Welcome and welcome.
Well, if she wants to come in here and like make her way down the line, you know...
Yeah. All those in favor? Opposed? None?
No old business, moving on to new businesses. Order number fourteen dash eighty, act on the request to place a referendum question to purchase a new fire truck on the local ballot for the November fourth, two thousand and fourteen municipal election.
Would anyone here in the audience like to speak to order fourteen eighty, request for a fire truck? Just a note, we had a gentleman earlier, first one, that spoke to this order, being denied by the council. With that...
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Councilor Holbrook.
We won't have a no.
He was looking my way. I just want to go out on a limb on this, and I know, I do not know for a hundred percent certain for this particular truck that we are looking to retire, the state of perhaps disrepair it's in, or the state of quasi-acceptability that it's in. However, I've been here a little while, and I have had opportunity in the past to see some of our vehicles as, you know, through walkthroughs and that sort of certain things. And I do know of the last fire truck that we purchased and how much it just was past any useful life whatsoever. It would not be put on the road at that point. There was nothing left to the frame, there was nothing left to the body, I mean, you could put your fist through holes in some of that framework of that vehicle. It is Maine, we do use salt, it's corrosive. Generally speaking, like I said, I can't speak to this specific vehicle, I think it maybe would behoove me to go check it out, but in every other circumstance that I've dealt with this in the past, it was very much merited and needed, and it wasn't a question of if it was past its use anymore. I do have, I guess, faith that it's an accurate description, that it is probably time to be replaced.
Okay, thank you. Anyone down here? Councilor Sinclair.
I would just have to agree with Councilor Holbrook. I haven't been on council as long as she has, but I do know that every time the fire department or the police department have come to us and asked us to do something like this, it's been extremely needed and probably has needed, had been in need for a while, and I have the utmost faith in them that if they're asking us to put this on the ballot, there's a very good reason for it. And on the flip side of that, I'm always in favor of putting something on the ballot, put it out to a vote, and let the townspeople decide for it method, you know, that's our job, so that's it.
Okay, well, speaking from experience, the gentleman earlier tonight spoke of his experience with aircraft. I have experience with aircraft. They're not exposed to the corrosive... I, uh, have experience with aircraft. They're not exposed to the corrosive, um, corrosion, um, on airfields like, uh, fi- you know, a, I believe that would be aluminum stainless steel, um, body has been exposed to the highly corrosive salt and, um, other additives that we use, um, so, on the roads. Um, I meant people, just with regular cars, can see the deterioration of their vehicles much faster nowadays with the, uh, you know, the, I think what we call it a bear road policy. So, um, talking from my experience, I have driven twenty-five year old fire trucks and they're really not safe. Um, stuff could go anytime. You're rushing to an emergency. This is an emergency vehicle, um, that have lives onboard that are going to extreme emergency calls, fires, uh, heart attacks. Um, those trucks, um, really do have a- a useful life. And twenty-five years is, I mean, I've- I've actually run thirty year trucks and they're even worse. Um, back when the city of Portland really was tight with money. So, I- I know what it's r- like to run those, uh, old trucks and it's not- it's not safe. So, um, that's my two cents to my fellow counselors. Um, so with that, um, is there anyone? See no one else? All those in favor? Opposed? None?
Okay, order number fourteen eighty-one is act on the request to place the referendum question to fund a townwide re- revaluation on the local ballot for November fourth, two thousand and fourteen municipal elections, and I believe the town manager.
Yes, if I could, uh, I'd like to pass out just a revised, um, copy. Uh, thankfully, actually, a resident, uh, Mr. Hanley pointed out that we had a number incorrect on this form and he was in fact correct, so we've corrected that. Uh, and just to draw your attention to it, uh, the financial statement that is a requirement to go with any bond order uh, must list, among other things, the total outstanding indebtedness and bonds. And the number on the previous order was- was incorrect, so it's been corrected in the version I just passed you.
Okay. All right. Would anyone lo- from the public like to speak to order fourteen eighty-one, municipal ballot? Bond? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Discussion?
I should mention, just for clarification, this would fund the actual, uh, revale, to hire an outside company to come in and revale the, uh, all property in town and also provides for updated software to manage that- that new information, new data that's, uh, that's derived from that process.
No one?
I'd just like to, I'd just like to say, uh, I- I believe we're due for a revaluation. Right, Tom?
Uh, the last one was in two thousand and five, so we're approaching the ten year mark, yes.
Okay. So, I think it's necessary that we do this. And I think Tom and, uh, the, uh, tax assessor kind of agreed that it would just, he being new, it would be kinda good to have it come in, have an independent group come in and do it.
Well, certainly, given the amount of questions that have been raised by taxpayers, I think, uh, the intent of this, I would hope, would help clarify some of that, uh, those questions. Uh, as I said, at the time this was discussed at budget time, I personally and professionally don't expect wide changes in value. Um, but we'll see. Uh, but if there's a question, then- and perception breeds reality. So, this will certainly, I- I hope, um, um, address some of those concerns in terms of assessment practices and ultimate values that are produced as a part of that.
Right, Councilor Benedict?
The only question I have is, would any part of this reevaluation be able to be used by the townspeople or the town in the ongoing court case that's up, that's going on right now?
Can't be. That's a fact.
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, it- exactly, as, uh, Councilor Blaze said, I'm not an attorney, but I- I believe, um, the timing would be such that evidence would be complete before the judge. In fact, i- it is complete now. Uh, and there's a extended delay. Uh, we're looking at these new values being effective, uh, for two thousand and sixteen, I believe. That's my expectation. So, it's- it's still a ways out to have the final product.
Okay. Uh-huh, yeah, okay. Okay. Counselor, I don't know which one was first, but Counselor Katerina, ladies first.
Yeah. Uh, I, um, Tom, do we know who the vendor is?
No, we go-
That we're using, or does it go out to?
We go through an RFP process for pricing purposes. We have talked to a couple of them. Uh, there is a preferred one, frankly, and that preference is for two reasons. One, their- their, uh, their ability to perform these sorts of mass, uh, revaluations and also their software product is a superior- superior product.
And- and I would just weigh in too, um, that I think it's time for a revaluation, given all the market changes that have gone on since two thousand and five. It makes sense that and given the- the time, we're ten years out, so I- I would support this.
Councilor Donovan?
Could we ask the, uh, town manager to go over the timeline during which this would take place and when it would take effect for the purposes of, uh, tax bills that citizens would be receiving?
As I mentioned, we'd go through a selective and RFP process, so we'd select a vendor. Um, I presume that would happen over the late fall or early winter months. Uh, ideally, we'd select a vendor sometime, uh, early in the spring. And because values, uh, take effect as of April or early of the year, and there's an extended process involved, uh, this will involve actually physically going inside, um, every property in town, which is one of the benefits, obviously, to make sure that the data and records are accurate. That in and of itself takes three or four months is my expectation. There's- there's an extended, uh, period for meeting with taxpayers and them appealing those new values. So, that's a long way of saying my expectation is the new values would take effect, uh, April first, two thousand and sixteen.
I think that, uh, since it's, uh, a two thousand and sixteen event, that really makes it eleven years out. And given that we've had a substantial recession between two thousand and five and two thousand and sixteen, uh, the town really would benefit tremendously from knowing that the values are now reestablished at whatever they are. Uh, and a lot of the doubts that people might have about the appropriateness of their, uh, tax assessments would be answered by doing this. So, I think this is a wise expenditure.
Councilor Holbrook?
(laugh) I didn't even raise my hand. Um, it just, I- I- I guess I would just point out, um, cart before the horse, it goes through voter referendum, so.
Right.
I don't know that people will be too happy to really want to have a reevaluation. I- I imagine there's probably those that are quite happy and hopping up and down to have an- an independent review. And I imagine there's probably a whole (laugh) set of people that are going, "Don't look at my house that close."
Yep.
Um, but I will so gladly support it.
Some may go up, some may (inaudible).
Yeah, exactly. Some people's may go down with the (inaudible).
Hey, anyone down this end?
I- I agree. I think it needs to be done tonight.
End of discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? All right. Standing committee reports, liaison reports. We'll start with Councilor St. Clair.
Um, I'm quick. My- my two large committees that I've been working on, um, both presented tonight. Uh, so, I'm hoping that opens me up a little bit to spend a little time with some of my other committees that I've been lacking in a little bit. And I appreciate, um, some of my fellow council members standing in for me at times over the last few months. Um, so, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Blaze?
Uh, no committee meetings.
Okay, Councilor Benedict?
Nothing to report.
Nice. See how nice and clean we are down here?
All right, um-
I'll mess it up if I'm (inaudible).
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Counselor Katerina?
You'll yield your time to K- to G. Marie?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, yield your (inaudible).
Um, the long-term planning committee, um, you've probably read in the paper, uh, that we've been working on looking at Dunston and how we can revitalize that area. It's- it's a long, um, process. Uh, there will be a meeting, uh, for people, uh, out in the public to know about Monday, September eighth, from six thirty to eight, uh, here at Town Hall. Uh, basically a brainstorming session, um, to follow up on the sustained sediments pilot study on Dunston. Uh, there will be a workshop at four thirty. There will be the neighbors, property owners and business owners in Dunston. And you're welcome to come and- and listen there, but we really want that to be a time when the neighbors and people who will be impacted potentially down the road, uh, with anything will speak. But at six thirty, uh, other people are invited and I believe that all of the counselors got an invitation today, I think. It came out on email, but anyway, yeah. So, that's really the big thing, long-term planning is working on, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Donovan?
Uh, neither energy nor finance met, uh, during the summer season, uh, since we last had a, my town council meeting, so I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Holbrook?
Uh, yes, so, we, thinking of finance, and I just have it in front of me and (laugh) lost it. There we go. Um, finance committee will be meeting September sixteenth, um, and that will be at nine o'clock, their usual time, in the A.M., not P.M. Uh, and to continue, um, going over your today as well as, um, if Tom has any, maybe, I know you've been busy, but if he's had any more progress on our, um, list of what are some, you know, he's been trying to pull together all the information on what shared services are with the school and the town and, um, trying to put, uh, which is hard, a dollar number on what that might be and what some things we have that might be, opportunities that are available as well. Uh, so, we also will have, um, the school department, um, there as well at that meeting and they'll be going over some of just their year end totals with us. And that's it for finance. I have Housing Alliance will be meeting this Thursday, September fourth, at six thirty. Uh, I'm, among other things, I'm sure they'll be talking about Griffin Road and our vote tonight. Uh, they also will be talking about, um, our other, the other project, which is the Habitat Community Project on Broad Turn. Um, that does go in front of the planning board. I think that's their- their next meeting, which I don't have on me.
September fifteenth.
September fifteenth. So, um, that project is kinda moving along and- and at that meeting with the Housing Alliance, um, we'll be getting an update on- on the progress of that. Um, as well as looking at some possible potential other sites and other projects that might be available, um, or opportunities and just looking to see what else we might be able to put our fingers in and get involved with. Um, our other committee is Historic Preservation. They met, um, I guess, this last evening. Uh, we do have a regular scheduled meeting for the first Tuesday of next month, although, um, that is possibly being postponed for now. More to come. We're hopeful to have an outreach meeting. Um, we are at a place of that committee that there is a mostly complete list of, at the point that they're comfortable with, um, of what is left with historic significance in town. Um, comfortable enough that we'd like to go to that next step of an outreach meeting. So, there should be, um, the mailers head- kinda heading out to the people that own those properties. Some of those might be buildings, some might be structures, some might be a monument that's there or something that's unmarked that's there. Uh, but it's a vested parties meeting. We're hoping to have an outreach meeting to achieve a couple of things. Um, the- the first objective is more or less just to let folks know that, hey, you have something unique and do you know that? (laugh) So, that's the first step. Um, the second step is, um, just to solicit some feedback from- from the homeowners and- and the property owners as to, um, ideas and concepts that they might have as far as, um, what can we do to help them as a town to encourage that preservation and- and not hinder it. Uh, so again, um, like I said, we don't have a firm date for that, but that- that should be coming. And like I said, everybody should be receiving a mailing. Um, and then Historic Preservation also has the, um, I'm happy to say, the majority of the work at the Honawa House is now done. Um, the last step, it will be the air vents on the building so that the building does breathe. Um, but all other work is complete at this point. Um, and the committee is looking at exploring opportunities, um, to actually get the house maybe open for a weekend or two during the summer and maybe partner with the Historical Society and have, you know, an exhibit and- and that sort of thing. So, again, they're exploring those avenues. And, um, also, at the last meeting, they started working on a criteria for a short, core list of properties that the town might want to pursue. Um, so, that was a very lengthy, all-consuming discussion for- for that meeting of, you know, what level and what criteria makes it a- a truly unique Scarborough heart and soul? What's the criteria, um, that we might have an interest in owning or securing that for the future? Um, and that's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Richard, can I, um, can I just say one question?
Yes, you-
I'm so sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to let the public know that our next ordinance meeting is scheduled for September seventeenth. It is at one o'clock in the afternoon. Um, I know that there has been, I've gotten a couple of emails from people struggling with that time being in the middle of the day for people that work. Um, and so, I want people to know that we have, I have taken that to heart. Um, this last, this meeting in September was already, um, put into our calendars, I think, three or four months ago. Um, so, I'm hoping to- to maybe start even alternating those to try to accommodate those people that can't come during the day. Um, and that, it's- it's helpful to staff to do it during the day because they're here a lot. And so, um, it's also helpful to, um, single moms. So, um, that's mainly why we have done it that way. Um, but I'm very happy to, um, try to alternate that so that we can try to accommodate some other people. So, I just wanted to make sure people knew that we did, we, I did get those emails and we are taking that to heart and we're gonna try to make some changes, um, starting, well, October and then November, yeah. So, starting possibly with a new council.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have, uh, no committee reports and that leads us into the town managers.
Okay, a couple of quick points of interest. Um, as was mentioned, the Habitat project is coming back to the planning board. Um, the Alliance, I think, did a great job of insisting that they give us a- a fairly firm schedule and they're on schedule. So, uh, uh, we're pleased to see that moving forward. As a part of that project, um, the council may recall, the town received a CDBG grant to extend the sewer to enable this project. Uh, the town is administering that bid, uh, and those bids are due September sixteenth. And so, uh, will be under construction this fall, assuming that the bids come in, uh, at an acceptable level. Uh, there's also a public meeting coming up. Uh, this is on the Pine Point Crossing Bridge. The DOT is replacing the bridge on the lower end of Pine Point Road. Uh, again, that is on September sixteenth here in these chambers at six P.M. And DOT will be updating the public and other interested parties as to the plan, uh, and the timeframe and- and the like. Uh, G. Marie mentioned the Dunston Revitalization Plan brainstorming session. If you can, I encourage you to come. The invitations have gone to the town council, to SEDCO, Longreach Planning, Housing Alliance and how- and Historic Preservation. So, there ought to be a very interesting mix of folks that have been invited. And if, uh, members of the council can go, that would be terrific. Um, I'll coordinate with Chairman Sullivan, but, uh, there's, an offer's been extended from the school department to do a special tour for the council of the new Wentworth School. Should that be of interest? Uh, students are- are in the facility and so it's taking full shape. So, I'll work with Council Sullivan as to whether that's of interest and- and we'll find a date that works. And lastly, just to mention, for housekeeping for council and for the public, uh, Chairman Sullivan has- has agreed to allow workshops before the next, uh, two council meetings. That's the one on September seventeenth and on that evening at six P.M., like we did this evening. Uh, there'll be two different contract zone, uh, matters to be discussed. One is an amendment to an existing one and one is a brand new one. And then on October first, the indoor ice arena, uh, will be the subject of a workshop before that regular meeting. And perhaps going forward, should it go well, this might be some, uh, model that we could look at going forward. So, the council has a consistent opportunity to talk about things as opposed to having them land on your agenda and be, um, you know, with some urgency of action. Uh, so, that's a model that, uh, this will be a good experience just to see if it works well.
Well, just to piggyback- Well, just to piggyback on that, I think it has been a good experience. I don't, I think most of the council thinks so, that having these workshops, I mean, we've had quite a few this year-
Yes.
-in total, so, and they've worked out well. We've got-
Yes.
-all our issues aired out amongst councilors, and I think it's, I think it's, we've avoided a lot of, doing a lot of back and forth with amendments.
And it may be easier to get into a routine, such as the first meeting of every month, there's a workshop at 6:00, and obviously, the subject matter will change, and perhaps there's not a need to, but I think there's enough on your agenda that there's always something to talk about.
Right. I think that works out better. Everybody gets to say their piece, and, and better chance to, you know, convince councilors to see things, you know.
And it's terrific for staff, because that gives us direction so we can prepare things for your next meeting that are far, far more in liking with your expectation.
And also, the public gets to hear what each counselor is thinking, so, on the matter.
Very good. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, with that, we'll go to Counselor Member Comments, and is Counselor Holbrook ready?
I am, gonna just-
Nothing?
Say, "Good evening."
Zero.
All right. Wow.
Okay. Counselor Donovan.
Uh, I did, we had the K-9 report, that was helpful to get that in. It's the end of the season, it's an opportunity to look back at what really happened this past year, and as I think it's been said by, from many quarters, that the plover protection program was a big success. And one of the things that I want to applaud out of it was the volunteer monitors. People may not realize that the monitoring program on the beach was done all by volunteers, and I've always believed that it was not a police presence. People have often said, "Well, if we only enforced the rules." Well, I've always thought that a police presence was not the way to do it. A gentler, kinder, more educational approach, which is what the beach monitor program offers, and these people offered their time all summer, from May 7th, when we passed this ordinance, through until the last several days. So, it's been, it's been a wonderful contribution to the public. I want people to recognize that. And when people say, "Well, it's been a very successful program," the state of Maine, IFW, and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and Maine Audubon, which really run these plover monitoring and protection programs, they measure success by, do you have good ordinances and programs in place? And we do. We put them in place this year. They measure them on data. Did you have any number of plovers actually arrive on your beach, nest, and the chicks made it off the beach, in any numbers? And we had numbers that exceeded anything we've had in recent years. Pine Point did remarkably well. Higgins has finally come back. And they measure it in what they call productivity. What percentage of the chicks that are born actually survive and make it off the beach? And Higgins Beach had the highest productivity in the state, which I attribute to the protection that was afforded the chicks and the parents through the program we put in place. I think it was a great summer from the point of view that people who cherish their opportunities on the beach to have their dogs out there running, that still existed. There's a tremendous collegiality amongst dog owners that I think is a great social element of Higgins. I see it more at Higgins, because I live there, and I really applaud that. I think that's really terrific. I think there was also a winner here, in all the winners that we had, was the people who are not as comfortable having dogs off-leash on the beach. And these programs provided people with the opportunity to have places on the beach where they were not going to be subject to any kind of disruption. And getting back to the monitors, the, I, living at Higgins Beach, I have seen for years how there was no enforcement of dogs on leash in the evening hours. It simply was an unenforced and ignored rule. And this year, I've had so many people come up and tell me, what a great year it was. We could go to the beach in the evenings and know that we were going to be able to enjoy the beach. And it was, and it was because the monitors were there with courtesy and a friendly face to make sure that the rules are enforced, and I want to applaud them for that effort. It was wonderful.
Thank you. Counselor Catarina.
Um, yeah, just a couple of things. First, to do with cellphone coverage, I know there are those who say, well, I live in the RF zone. I would like to have A-plus coverage myself, but, you know, I know I'm not gonna get A-plus maybe, but I would like to see increased coverage from a public safety point of view, and also from a business point of view. And just remind people that it's not just about voice, it's also about data. And there are a number of people like myself who, when we're out and about working with clients, and whomever, we work on tablets and whatever, so, I, I'm hopeful we can work something out, I know we will, that will give us much better coverage in the part of Scarborough where I live, which is North Scarborough. Also, I wanted to thank the monitors working at the beaches. I didn't make it, oh, I guess I did make it down to Pine Point once or twice, but I'm at Higgins frequently, because I have relatives who live at Higgins Beach, and I saw a real difference this year also with, you know, when dogs were on leash, off leash. I think most people followed that. I didn't see any particular issues or hear about it, so, and I know that was a yeoman's job on the part of the monitors to do that. I also want to thank the folks who did volunteer to be on the K-9 Committee, because I know, I believe they met weekly, and, you know, they put together a pretty involved report that, as Richard said, we will look at. We've got a lot on our plate right now, but if we get nearer the winter, we'll probably be looking at that. And then my last thing is, just so you'll know, because I know I've had some constituents ask me about this, is I've started some preliminary discussions with Manager Hall and SEDCO and some other folks regarding how we may be able to work to have a better municipal private internet, I don't know if you want to call it internet independence, but what can we do as a town? Because it'd be a great economic development engine, and would be beneficial to residents, and we're very much in the, I just sent the email to Tom this week stage, so, but we have started that, so, that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Benedict.
I just have a couple of questions for our town manager. I don't mean to jam you up with the question, but it's just that I haven't heard anything coming through emails or whatnot of recent. Has there been anything done at 90 Broad Turn Road that you're aware of?
Today was the reinspection. We had two code officers, a structural engineer, and the town's health, safety, excuse me, the health officer, Dr. Stephen Kirsch, attended that. I did get just a quick briefing. It'll be probably a week or 10 days before we see written reports from all of them, and I'll be certain to provide you that information when I have it.
Okay. And my second question was, up on 22, I'm drawing a blank what the name of it is, the trailer park. I wanted to know if they had brought things-
Up the code?
Yeah.
I will defer that question to the town clerk. I'm just not as close to the licensure.
Not aware that they have.
Yeah.
I thought they had till February or something.
The last communications I had from the code officer, they had not.
I know it was a conditional license they're operating under. I don't recall what that condition was. We can research that, and I'll respond to the full counsel.
Thank you.
Counselor Blaze.
I just want to say that I think the new dog ordinance and the plover success ratio was outstanding, not only for the town, but for the state. I think overall, the people that walked the beach were happy, people that took their dogs to the beach were relatively happy. But I really want to thank the monitors. I lived down at Higgins Beach, and I know those monitors were out there every single day. I'd see them, and great people. They helped everybody, they instructed people, they were courteous. And also, I want to thank Ryan for doing an outstanding job of pulling this whole program together for the town. I don't know whether Ryan's gonna be around next summer, but I'll thank-
For his sake, I hope not.
Yeah, the last discussion I had with him, I-
That's it.
Counselor St. Clair.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I'll, like I did earlier, I thank the committee for their work, hard work, and I, well, there was such short notice on the barbecue to thank the beach monitors that I wasn't able to attend. I was really disappointed with that, because as council chair on behalf of the council, I wanted to be there to thank them for all their hard work and what they endured over the summer. So, unfortunately, I wasn't able to. I'll take this opportunity to thank them now. I believe I have a list of the emails. I'll be sending out an official thank you to everybody as soon as I can get to doing that. It's been a busy summer with my wife having a broken ankle, and two young kids, and work and everything else, but I'll, I will get to it. They owe that, so, I'd like to thank, and Brian. Brian also did a super job, but I think he put in more time than he should have, and-
Yeah, for sure.
And a real low paycheck, so, he's definitely took some knocks, I think-
Yes.
-over the season, so, but we're all better off for it, I think. We've learned a lot. I think we'll learn a lot again next year going forward. So, with that, what do you think about adjournments?
Second.
All those in favor?